All right, 6:30, we'll start the meeting.
Reporting in progress.
Okay, I have a couple of things to change on the agenda. We're going to take out that second executive session and add tax rate discussion under new business and remove our RPC municipal request for Tier 1B designation. Does anybody else have any alterations?
Remove that, the Tier 1?
Yeah, please. And then we're going to add tax rate discussion under new business?
Yep, I got that. Now we're getting rid of one of the executives.
Second executive?
Yep.
All right, anybody else have any other things to... okay.
I'd like to motion accept that as second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, anything on select board minutes of June 18th and liquor board minutes of June 18th and water and sewer commission minutes of June 18th?
No.
Okay. Anne, do you want to... any...
He's got to turn his down. Is that echoing off David's?
Dave, I'm just going to mute you and then if you have something you want to do.
What's that?
I'm needing to mute you because it's feeding back.
Oh, oh, that's fine.
Can you turn his volume down?
I think it bleeds through.
Okay.
So he can unmute.
Yeah.
All right, we have a lot of things to get through and I know your town manager's report will be in the Brandon Pitts reporter and online. So are there any highlights though, instead of kind of going through with all?
No, I'm still waiting on the greater hours. The newsletter's been delayed. It's almost ready to go to the printers. It's not on this list, that's why I'm telling you.
Oh, yeah.
I got delayed with all of the community concerns I've been handling, so
Okay.
it should hopefully be ready to go to the printers tomorrow, so it'll come out in mid-July instead of this week.
Okay. All right, thank you. And did anybody have any questions for Anne on anything on that list?
Nope.
Any select board member remarks?
I'm good.
I'll just announce that we did offer Anne Reid the town manager's position. We're just waiting for the contract from our attorney, just so everyone knows that. Okay, public comment?
Yeah, so as everybody knows, my name is Reg Charbonneau. I'm resident of Pittsburgh here. And I came to the meeting tonight because I have a few concerns about the rec department and the rec director. A few things. It all started with me. I look back through my emails. 2024 in February, January she had reached out looking for sponsorships for the T-ball and the softball teams in the rec department. And me as a business owner, I've been sponsoring Pittsburgh Rec Spring Sports, Mighty Mikes with Randy, up through whatever they needed for 20-plus years, longer than my daughters have been alive. So it's not like I'm just sponsoring just because my daughters are playing ball. I'm doing it for the community. And I feel there's no better advertisement than 15 kids running around with their logo on your shirt, you know, wearing it all the time. So anyways, we reached out, me and my wife to Liz, and said that we were interested in sponsoring like we'd always done, you know, and she said, "No problem." So as the season got close, I get a phone call from her during Maple season saying that, "Sorry to say, we do not need your sponsorship." And I said, "Really?" I said, "What's the issue?" I said, "You were advertising on Facebook on the rec department Facebook site that you were looking for sponsors." "Well, I asked for too many sponsors and not enough kids have turned out and we don't have the teams." And I said, "Okay, so you have plenty of sponsors, you know, people that want to donate $250. How did you decide who gets to be sponsors?" "Well, I think it's time that we have new sponsors in the rec department." And I said, "What?" And I said, "So explain to me, how do you pick?" She said, "Well, this is the way I'm going to do it, to be fair. Whoever's check came in first before the deadline, they're going to be my key sponsors." And I said, "Absolutely not." I said, "I'm going to hang up right now and call Rob Ketchum." So I got off, called Rob right up, explained my situation to Rob. I said, "Here's the deal, Rob," I said, and he knew, you know, Randy Adams, Jen Pop, everybody knows it's a shoe-in that I'm going to donate, you know, $250 every spring, you know, to help out with the rec department. It's something I enjoy doing. So Rob talked to a few of the other members of the rec board and nobody was aware that the rec director was running the sponsorship program this way. And my feeling is, right, is maybe I'm wrong, but I did work at Keystone and I understand printing. Every year, a new sponsor gives you $250. You have to come up with new screens, new print and everything. So of your $250, I explained to Liz, with a new sponsor, the town's actually, the rec department's losing money. Because when you have Reg Charbonneau's, you know, Maple Leaf softball logo for five years, Mitchells or Winning Image, whoever, they just print it. But every year when you have to get a new sponsor, I'm assuming that they're charging to have screens made and everything done. And I explained that to Liz. So anyways, she must have got, talked to a little bit and she called and sent out an apology saying, "No problem, you know, we are going to let you continue to sponsor." I said, "Okay, I will do it for this year and I'll think about doing it for next year." So I did it again this year. So last year, my oldest daughter worked at the rec summer program and she worked under the rec director. And as I'm very well aware, there's no guaranteed hours when you sign up to work at the rec department this summer. I understand that. There's no guaranteed hours. So my daughter, of course, being 15 and wanting a car and everything, last year she took everybody's hours that she could and she was getting between 30 and 40 hours and a decent paycheck. And she enjoyed the job and everything was good. So this spring, she signs up and under the impression that there's no guarantee of hours, which we understand. So I don't know the exact dates because it's been a little bit, but they did a team building day like on a Wednesday or Thursday before the program started roughly 10 days ago. And when all the counselors got to the team building, the rec director explained that she had hired way too many counselors, that she had way too many employees for what was needed for this year. So she said to all of the employees, counselors, that, you know, "Everybody's going to get 20 hours, you know. So that's okay." You know, "My daughter comes home a little bit bummed, I'm only going to get 20 hours. We're not doing it in long days. We're doing her hours. We're going to be nine to one, five days a week, which makes it hard to find something else to fill in the time or come to work for Dad or whatever it might be to pay for car insurance and stuff, which whatever, it's fine. We knew this going in." So that was like on a Thursday. The following Tuesday, my daughter and two new employees, Liz comes in and says, "Well, everybody's hours, your three hours are getting cut back to 10 hours a week." And my daughter comes home and says, you know, "How come we were 20 last Thursday, now we're Tuesday, it's 10?" I'm like, "I have no idea what's going on." I said, "I don't know anything about it." So my oldest daughter goes the next day and unbeknown to me, the rec director had talked to a couple of the senior counselors and they explained to my daughter that my daughter was not going to be getting the hours because she doesn't follow directions. This is what Liz told her. She doesn't do well with the groups of kids and she's just not a good worker. So, you know, I'm a little biased, but that was hard to swallow because my daughter does pretty well in school, is a pretty good athlete. So not a big deal. I was a little upset that, you know, counselors and the rec director is telling other counselors and then they're telling these three girls, but I'm only here on my daughter's behalf, that you're down to 10 hours because you're a poor worker. So my daughter calls me and I reached out to the rec director last Thursday, left her a message, "Could you please call me?" And so she did call me back Thursday or Friday morning and I called her and I explained my concerns. I said to her, I said, "I don't know how my daughter worked for you 30, 40 hours last summer and there was no issues. You never called her in, you never had a complaint about her. If she was a bad employee and you cut her hours and were saying she was a bad employee in two days of employment, why did you hire my daughter back? Why did you even bring my daughter back? You shouldn't have hired her." And I said, and second of all, I said, "I want to discuss the fact that there is a couple counselors and one of them is the same exact age as my daughter, who you are letting her keep her full 20 hours." And I said, "I want an explanation of why this same age student or employee or counselor is getting the full 20 hours and this other girl is too and my daughter and these other girls are only getting 10." I said, "What's your reasoning?" And Liz went right in and said, "Your daughter doesn't follow directions. Your daughter doesn't handle kids, groups of kids well. You know, you're pretty much, your daughter's a poor employee." And I said, "Well, in two days, you diagnosed this? You know what I mean? And she worked for you, Al, last summer and there's never been a complaint? You've never called her in? You've never spoke to her?" And I said, "Secondly," I said, "I don't want to get into this, but I think there's a major conflict of interest of the two you're keeping." Well, that didn't set well. And she said to me, "I don't want to be threatened and I don't want to be bullied." I said, "I'm not threatening you and bullying you." I said, "I'm calling you as a taxpayer and I want to know the reasonings why these three counselors are getting cut to 10 hours and there's others that are maintaining their hours that are the same age, same everything." And I said, "I don't understand why this is." And I said to her, "Just so you know, I'm going to take this to the next level." And her comment was, "I'm sure you are, just like you did last time." Well, long story to short, okay, I come to find out, but one of the counselors that is keeping, that's the same exact age, that is keeping her full 20 hours, was on vacation. She hasn't worked for the rec department yet. So how can you pick this one is a better counselor and this one isn't? And second of all, what are you going around telling other counselors the reason why you're cutting three employees' wages is because they're poor workers? You know, poor attitude, don't follow directions, this, that, whatever. So she got ugly with me and hung up. Didn't even let me, we couldn't even have an adult conversation. She just hung up on me. So, long story short, I'm just here because, you know, you know, stuff like this gets swept under the carpet and I wanted to bring it to the select board's attention. I was unaware that the rec committee had been, you know, completely dispersed and there's a lot of rumors, you know, going around. I mean, I was told that, you know, the selectmen dismissed that and I then found out that that's not really true, you know what I mean? So anyways, I'm here just to let you guys know what's going on with the rec department. My daughter quit her job for the Pittsburgh Rec Department on Friday to take on a new job. One, because when you have people within your organization saying stuff about that. And secondly, because of her relationship with Liz. And third, who wants to work 10 hours a week? You know, when you got to pay for car insurance and gas. And I just told her, it doesn't make sense. So that's why I'm here, is to just bring you guys up to speed. There's several other things, you know, that I'm not going to get into tonight that other parents have reached out to me about the rec director, where she's dropped the ball on things that haven't, you know, that wouldn't have got dropped with previous rec directors, that's for sure. But, long story short, I'm here just to let you guys know, I'm not looking for, you know, like I said, we're moving on. You know, I will be done sponsoring the Pittsburgh Rec, you know, and having anything to do with the rec department moving forward.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, yeah.
So, you know, because I just feel like this whole situation, two years in a row, is just, you know, uncalled for and not necessary.
Well, I thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anne, as the department head's direct supervisor will be
Yep.
who will address that.
Yep.
But I do appreciate you bringing that to us. Without, so we will have, we can't get into a full, like, discussion about it, but does anyone have specific questions that they would like to ask?
Go ahead.
Joe, when did you talk to Rob?
I talked to Rob, I've talked to Rob recently. The reason being is, as a town taxpayer, I'm very disappointed that we don't have lifeguards. I'm very disappointed. And I spoke to one of our selectmen and he doesn't know what a lifeguard gets paid. So I called Rob and I said, "What are we paying lifeguards?" I said, "What's their hourly rate?" Because in my opinion, somebody that's trained saving lives is worth pretty good money. So when I called Rob, he's like, "This is what I, they were getting paid through us." But he said, "I stepped down." He said, "You know, I'm no longer involved, but if you have any more questions, feel free to reach out."
Would, I have a question. Was your daughter a lifeguard certified?
No, she wanted to be, but when I saw...
Any of the other three girls?
No.
None of them are?
No.
Okay.
Because I had mentioned that to her, that that would be a good fill-in.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You know, but, you know, like I said, I just wanted to know that when I saw the lifeguard thing on social media, I was like, "What? You know, we can't..." I believe when Jen Pop was working here, we have 11 lifeguards.
Reg did contact me on the lifeguard situation
Okay.
and brought it right up. He was concerned about not having lifeguards on the weekend and I explained what was told us.
Yeah.
So I am the one he spoke to and I didn't know what they're being paid. I'm going to make one comment if I can.
Sure.
Ally, right?
Mm-hmm.
Ally's worked for us for three years.
Okay.
No problem.
Got to be a reason.
She wouldn't be coming back if she was. She's a very nice girl.
And I'm not...
So I've got to say, I've got, I've got an issue here somewhere because that's not what we've ever seen.
Okay.
So. And all I feel is, is that last Thursday, the rec director sent my daughter a text. "Are you sure you're okay with working 10 hours a week?" It was almost like she was, you know, wanting to have her be done because that cuts, you know, these three girls, if I can get rid of their 30 hours, then, you know. And the way I look at it is if she hired too many counselors, you know, we just got to stand up and, you know, it is what it is, but you don't try to talk bad about people and get people to quit, you know what I mean? It's like me, if I order six yards of extra concrete, I got to take it on the chin.
Yeah, the point somebody needs it.
Did you have any other...
No, since it's personnel, we can't really say.
Right.
No, that's why, just if you had just specific questions for Reg, but otherwise, no, we're not going to, yeah. So did you have anything, Tom?
No.
Dave, did you have anything?
Turn my...
He has to unmute.
Unmute yourself.
It's a little microphone button.
There you go. Nope, we still can't hear you.
Unmute.
There we go.
There you go. No, I'm good. I, you know, Reg has called me about all this, so, yeah, I know about it, so I'm good. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Anne?
Can I comment?
Yes.
So Liz reached out to me starting in February about lifeguards.
Yep.
We had 10 last year. Part of the problem was, of those 10, most of them are juniors and seniors in college. They've gone off to the real world and been adults. We searched, we put articles in four different papers. We used it indeed. The four we have are the only four that applied that had the certifications necessary. So it wasn't like anyone slacked on the job trying to find them.
My question is, what do we pay a certified lifeguard that's going to save somebody's life?
So we pay comparable to what Rutland Rec pays. We reach out to Rutland Rec every year to find out how much they're paying.
And what is that?
I would have to check payroll records somewhere.
Okay, because I was told it was 18 to 20 from Rob Ketchum and I don't know how accurate that is. But in today's business world, to get qualified people for 18 or $20 that want to risk, you know, I mean, that's a serious job. A lifeguard is a serious job, right? If somebody drowns on your watch for $18, I'd rather go work somewheres else with a lot less responsibility.
Well, you have police officers making not much more than that.
No, but I'm just, I'm just explaining my situation. And the other fact is, is if we were paying a little bit more, maybe you wouldn't have to rely on juniors and seniors. Maybe you could hire somebody that's looking for seasonal work, like from Killington or something like that, that would be interested with a little more responsibility taking on the lifeguard position.
Like I said, we reached out to other rec departments in the area to find out who was paying what and we're in the middle of all of them. We're not the cheapest, we're not the most expensive. You know, we tried to be budget conscious. As far as Liz's decision to cut counselors' hours, she came to me before she had the conversation with those individuals.
Yeah.
She has two sets of counselors, those that are 19 and older
Yeah.
and those that are younger.
Yeah.
Last year, we had a problem with some counselors were not quite as competent and as comfortable with children. It didn't matter their ages, whether they were the 14 and 15-year-olds or the 20-year-olds last year. So she needed more counselors on hand. This year, part of her staff, a good chunk of her staff, came back as returning staff. They are comfortable with the kids. They understand the kids. They've been with the kids.
And that's my daughter.
And then the older kids that she has are also early education, that kind of thing, for majors. So they've been in that situation. They know how to deal with it. So she came to me and she says, "I have too many counselors." She says, "I don't want to just let them go." I said, "If they're doing their jobs, they're doing them well," and she didn't talk negatively to me about any of them.
But she did write to me directly. Exactly what my daughter brought home from the other counselors is what Liz told me directly on the phone last Thursday.
So I heard part of that conversation
Yeah.
and I know she was trying to talk to you and you were cutting her off by the sounds of what I was hearing.
Well, that's funny.
So I...
Yeah, I know.
She did come to me before she cut anyone's hours and she says, "What do I do? Because I don't want to just let kids go." I said, "You can give them a choice." So she and I agreed, you know, your counselors, you can cut across the board their hours and tell them if they do not want to stay, give them a letter of recommendation to find employment elsewhere. So that's the way I left it with her.
Right, but in that disrespect, right, I mean, your cop out, your and Liz's cop out was to cut their hours till they quit.
That was not a cop out.
No, that, I mean, there's no kid going to work 10 hours a week. So, and you dropped from 20 on Thursday to 10 on Tuesday.
I didn't get into it with the number of hours.
I'm just explaining to you...
I think, well, yeah.
No, but I'm just explaining my side. You didn't want to cut them, but you guys will just drain them financially so they have to quit and that's what happened. Two of them quit. So you guys achieved your goals. You got two of them to quit to get rid of because you cut them to 10 hours and there's no kid that's 16-years-old with a driver's license and gas can survive on 10 hours. So your and her agreement was, cut their hours and then hope they quit and we'll give them a letter. That's what you just said, Anne.
I said...
So would you like Anne to follow up with you on this? Because we do have to kind of move on.
No, 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 I'm just saying, but I mean, I understand. I see the process.
Yep.
It was to abolish enough counselors, cut their hours. Liz talked bad about them to other counselors.
So what I'm saying is, so would you like her to deal with this and then Liz and get back to you?
At this point, we've moved on to another, you know what I mean?
I just didn't know if you wanted to get anything further.
You know, I'm moving on from Pittsburgh Rec.
Okay.
You know, and the, you know, the town in general here, you know, I mean, you got a young person that wants to work, right? And what have we done?
No, I know.
Kick them when they're down.
I am sorry if all that all went down.
Thank you for bringing your points to our attention.
Thanks for letting us, yeah.
And I'm going to head out, but I appreciate you listening and have a good evening.
Yeah, you too. Take care. Do we have any other public comment before we move on to the agenda? I didn't know why you guys were here, that's fine. Is it a secret somewhere on the...
I don't know.
I don't know. Hey, Donna, did you have any public comment? Since you just, we're just finishing up, that's part of it?
Well, I don't know. Is Anne going to get instated here tonight?
We, you missed that, yes. We did, we did say, we did say that we offered her the contract. We just were still waiting on our attorney to actually produce said contract.
Did you sign in, Donna, before we forget?
Yeah.
I did.
Sign in.
Yeah.
I will.
So, yeah. All right, old business, Pamela Jackson driveway complaint update. So we already did a site visit and what's the update on that?
So I talked to Tom Markowski today. The swale's supposed to go in tomorrow. That's missing along driveway. He's telling me they're going to make it right for the driveway, but he won't tell me how they're going to make it right at the moment. So I'm still trying to converse with him. Our phone call, he was on his cell phone in Fairhaven and I could hear about two out of every five words he said. So we are going to have another conversation. We did, Sean, Chad and I did meet with Wilks today about all of the driveways needing to be saw cut, that kind of thing. Wilks feels that, we looked at Jackson's driveway as one. I know that Pamela really wants Witherby's to fix it. We have Wilks right here is one of the issues. And...
Yeah.
So they did look at the driveway. They don't feel like it was lifted as far back.
Okay.
It was two workers for Wilks. I think they've been there for, they've done...
Over 30 years.
Okay.
And he said he doesn't feel like it was lifted as far back as maybe we were told, that kind of thing, because all of the grass along the edges is like still exactly like over the edges of the asphalt and stuff. So we are trying to figure out how to best move forward with this, as well as the two other driveway complaints I've received.
I think it's pretty critical that Wilks has to be prepared. If that fix doesn't work properly, it's going to be on them
On them, yeah.
to come back and do it correctly. And that's, Markowski's have to know that that's part of the deal too. Yeah, it's coming out of what we've held back because it, can, please, can you hold on one second? Let the select board talk to them, we'll take it. I think it's really critical that we hold them to this, to do it correctly. And I'm, I'm fine with them doing it, honestly. I think they have the ability and know what they're doing.
I think the approach to this, we should figure out or get an idea of what Wilks thinks should be done. We have Witherby's opinion. And then we've got to get a description of what's going to be done, run it by the property owners, because I understand there's more than one now, and figure out what the cost is going to be.
How many total?
The other two, we don't believe are going to be a big issue. They just really want it saw cut and they want to make sure that the asphalt is to the depth of what
What it was.
they had. So we've gone over that with Wilks today.
If the decision, if we're going to have to make the decision of what's going to be done in each driveway, we need to get a little more information as to what Wilks will do and we have Witherby's.
My concern is, Wilks wants to do this, what, next week?
Wilks would like to put the base coat down tomorrow and then hold off on a top coat until...
This is why...
Yeah, we're not going to have a, I don't think we can have a back and forth. I think we've got, but it has to be done the right way
Yeah.
so that you're covered. That's the most important thing. And I think we have to have buy-in from Markowski and from Wilk.
Before they do any payment.
If there's another issue, you're coming back on your dime.
Yeah.
That, I think, has to be clear. But I...
Dave, do you have anything on this?
No, other than, I mean, obviously, this is on Markowski's correct, it's not on the town.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, if we've got, what, two, three driveways now, two of them are, two of them willing to have Wilk do it and then we have one that has somebody else, I guess, you know, it certainly would be nice if the people that want Witherby's to do it would be willing to have Wilks do it, if Wilks can, you know, give them the same guarantee that Witherby says. But, you know, that's probably ultimately going to be up to Markowski's because they're the ones paying for it.
Yep.
But we just need to make sure everybody signs off and whoever does it agrees that if it isn't right, it's on them. So we don't have to hear this again.
Well, if, if, if Wilk does their work and then Witherby comes back, now you're going to have two cold joints. See what I'm saying? Because Wilk can pour right, right up into the driveway. And, but if Wilk does his work and then Witherby comes, you've got a cold joint at the, at the road as well as the, the joint where they cut to the driveway again.
Well, I guess she's right here, we can ask her a question.
Yeah, I know.
Is that going to work to have them do the work and get it correct?
That driveway's a year and a half old. And I was told, we were told, that if it wasn't done, you were going to have, it wasn't done correctly, you'd have two scenes and it would cause problem and in a year and a half, we would have to probably get a new driveway. So from our standpoint, we'd rather not, but if we don't have a choice... But if we don't have a choice...
I, that's the point I'm, I'm trying to make. If, if Wilk does the whole pour, they can continue their pour into your driveway. If they do the road and then Witherby comes back, you're gonna have a joint at the road and at the saw cut.
So now you've got two joints.
Right. But that's not what I had before.
That's what you'll end up with, though, that's the problem.
Right, so that would mean, so Wilks would be making it smoother.
If Wilk can do it and guarantee the work, or Markowski do the guarantee on it, is that gonna be okay with you?
I'll have to talk to my husband. What would you guys do if it's a year and a half driveway? Tom, you're a friend of mine, what would you suggest us?
I take the friend part out of it because I have to do what's
I know, I know.
what's right. And personally, I would have Wilks do it because you're gonna have one continuous thing from the road into your driveway. Otherwise, you're gonna have that break at the road. Then if they go to do another break where they saw cut it, now you've got two breaks. If Witherby does it. Personally, I'd have Wilks do it if it's mine. That's just me. So would I.
Yeah.
That's looking at it logically. With the guarantee, they're gonna fit it, screws up, they're gonna fix it.
Who's gonna get that in writing?
Oh, Markowski's.
So Markowski's, that's, is that, they're prepared to do that?
Would you like to speak to your husband, call Anne in the morning? I mean, obviously, if they want to get started.
Because apparently, they're gonna be doing some paving here in the next few days, so we don't have, we can't come to another meeting and decide we're gonna do this.
Right.
So it's decided today.
I feel like I'm being forced.
No.
Being honest with you.
I mean, the driveway will get fixed.
Yeah, we're certainly gonna fix it.
Not the way it should be.
How, how do we know that, though? I mean, how do we know that?
Because I'm taking the expert opinion of the person that installed the driveway.
Well, I'm, we've got, well, we've got two good asphalt people.
Well, when Wilks has entered our driveway and said one word to us.
Did they look at it today, Anne?
Yeah.
We had Tim Rice there and, yeah.
Did anybody knock on our door?
Hold on, Chad, go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions. What was Witherby's solution to redo your whole driveway?
Um, no, 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 no. It was thirty-three hundred dollars worth of damage, estimated.
So they...
He said they fractured underneath the driveway.
So they're gonna cut back to that spot?
Fracture, and then, he said...
How far back?
I, I don't know, it's in the estimate, I'm not, I can't speak to that.
I didn't know.
We have that part of it somewhere.
I think it's where their spray paint on her lawn.
Yes, yes.
Is that where Wilk's is gonna fix it?
That's where the crack is.
Okay, and that all that was farther up than Wilk? So...
Hold on, let's let, yeah, let's let Chad finish.
Yeah, we, I mean, we did look at it today. Um, we saw, saw where that paint was. Wilk's opinion was, so what was it, maybe a foot, foot and a half from the, where it was broken, cut back. So it was a couple of foot, feet difference between the paint and where their dots were. So, but, so I mean, either way, whether they saw there or saw where the mark is, there'll be that joint. I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for anything, but I mean, it's, if we, for that little bit of difference of cutting back.
It's only like a two foot piece we're talking about?
Let's do it.
My right hand was, it wasn't a big...
It wasn't a big difference between where Wilks thought it was, the damaged.
We should go to her mark. Yeah, I mean, that's what we should go to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I mean, I guess it's my opinion.
Then it's the same as if Witherby's do it, it's gonna be done at where he...
Your opinion matters here, Chad, so...
It's, I mean, it's not that far back to get the same results.
So let's do it and have it done with.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and, and I guess, um, if I can continue just for a minute. Um, yeah, well, they're, well, we'll be, they're open tomorrow to the base. They had issues at the plant, so most likely it'll be next week they want to do that.
What's the rush? All of a sudden?
Well, let's let Chad finish.
Well, it's been, I mean, we got the road ground and ready. Just ready for asphalt. They've done the work. They got a little bit of touch up to do. If we leave it like it is now, then we will be out grading it all summer, adding fluoride once a week. So I mean, they get the base on, then that protects the road. Normally, they do, they were saying they do the base, then when they come back, do the top coat. They would blend the driveways in at that time. Uh, Anne shared some of your concerns about doing everything so quickly. Um, and they're, you know, willing to do the base, either do the driveways, do the base or leave driveways till next spring and come back and do a top coat.
I don't know if you're gonna leave it over winter.
Options. But...
So when they do their first layer, they're not gonna do the driveways? Is that what you just said? The base?
They weren't planning on it. They were going, what their plan was, is do the base. They extend into the driveways, probably a foot. Um, and then, so then, do the base, they were gonna go around, do our other paving that we have scheduled in town. Then they'd come back, do the top coat, and when they do the top coat, then they would blend in. And that way, the base, within about a foot, the top coat would overlap that base for the joint on the roadside. And they would, they'd have all the driveway saw cut where needed to be.
All right, um, Dave has a question.
Okay, um, so Ms. Jackson, is your concern that Wilk doesn't have experience blending your driveway in? Is that your major concern with this?
I guess so. I mean, no one has come to me from that organization and said anything about, oh, they would fix our driveway.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask Chad, uh, from what you know, does Wilk have experience doing what needs to be done to fix this driveway?
I, I believe so. We've had him for years and I believe they do a good job. If, I mean, if you would like, we, I can, um, contact him from Wilk's and meet with you. Ms. Jackson, if, uh, you know, if you want to talk to him in person, I have no problem.
Well, I think it would be necessary for us to understand, because it was explained to my husband how he was, Witherby was going to do the job.
Yeah, so...
And I was not present when he spoke to him, so I can't speak to it, so...
Okay, so I mean, I'm willing to...
Okay.
Would that be tomorrow? That he's gonna be up to do that, or?
I could try. I, I would get a call.
Would your husband be around tomorrow with you to do that, or is that not?
Uh, well, I won't be home tomorrow, but my husband will be in and out if we had a time. If someone could call us, certainly he'd be around.
Yeah, I can get your number tonight and give you a call when I get a little moment.
That's reasonable.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you.
I'm a little disappointed.
I'm gonna give you your number.
It's on the submit sheet.
Okay.
Wow.
Um, all right. Fire Hill Concerns update. We have something from, um...
We have something from Jeff and we have something from Gary.
Okay.
So Gary, at this point, has said because no violations were ever issued throughout the time, that we basically need to start over with new violations, create a new file and go forward from there for each of the properties.
What was that?
This is what...
Say that again, Anne.
Basically, have to start over because...
We have to stay, start over because no violation, you know, no ticketing ever occurred on any of the letters of violation. And he said that the file was a hot mess. Um, so the best start point is to start all over again with new violations and move forward with those.
Okay.
That's what Gary said.
Oh, that's what Gary said?
That's what Gary said.
Oh, I thought you were talking, Jeff said that. Okay, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
That's what Gary said.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Attorney.
Jeff and I took a ride today, went to all three properties. He said all three properties are in better condition than they were the last time he took a drive. He will be issuing new violations for each of the three. Um, we counted vehicles. I've taken pictures of those. We also visited several other properties in town that have violations, so we're not picking on just the forests with this. We took a, a drive. Um, and there are, I think, four other properties that will be getting violation letters as well. Most of them are for, uh, too many, I don't want to call junk vehicles, because I don't want to offend anybody, but vehicles that are obviously not registered and inspected and some are missing wheels.
Okay.
Um...
That's a fair way to say it.
Those vehicles, we'll call them.
Um, so that's kind of where we're at with the Fire Hill updates.
Okay.
I have gone back and forth with several, um, citizens in the last week about various issues. I have talked to Ashley Forrest about her property twice. Um, she's assured me that she's going to be working on it and has outlined a plan for cleaning it up. She's supposed to be contacting me weekly to stay on top of what is to be done and what has been done.
Weekly.
Weekly.
That's great.
Um, I have reiterated that we need stuff out of the right of way. The town right of way needs to be cleared so that our vehicles are going to be able to plow the roads, maintain the roads without damaging their goods or our equipment.
Sure.
So I have tried to reiterate the fact that our right of ways need to be cleared.
Hold on one second. Um, so does anyone on the board have any questions, comments?
I think it's great that we have agreement with one of the properties to at least have weekly check-ins and something's going on. And I knew they were in the meeting, so that, that's great.
I do, too.
And I think the fact that you and Jeff did go around and make note of everything that needs to be dealt with is correct, too. I think, I commend you for doing that. That, that's a good thing to do.
We still have another sec, uh, not like another half a town to do, but we've done about half of town today. He ran out of time. He had to be somewhere, so I made sure.
I think that's great.
No, and that's good, just to be fair, too, because it's been the focus on this one road, you know, and it's not just them.
Several properties, I can tell.
It's, some of the stuff's gotten past what even is a violation of the ordinance. So I guess then the other thing is, too, is just proper documentation and...
So Jeff is supposed to be sitting down on Friday, writing up documentation, showing me the letters so that they can go out for all of the properties concerned.
So the process is, we send letters again?
We have to send a notice of violation of the junk ordinance.
Are they certified?
So that we mailed certified mail and regular mail, just as they were before.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else before I go to Greg? Go ahead, Greg.
So to try and go backwards from where you just left off, how much time do they have to answer to the letter that's sent to them? And, and if they don't ever open it, what happens then?
So I believe it's thirty days from the date of the letter.
Yep.
Um, and then it usually, it takes anywhere from thirty to forty-five days for us to get certified mail back from the post office. And I can tell you that because of water shut-off notices I've sent or delinquent tax, uh, tax sale notices that I've sent. It does take that long for us to get them back. Once we get them back, I either usually have somebody hand-delivering stuff into doors with photos sent to me of the certified mailings being served or I have them hand-deliver if the party is home.
Okay, are you, you went for a ride yesterday with him or today you said? Okay, so when I saw Mr. Byazusi last week, he told me that he had everything, he went around to all the different properties last week and had a list of violations that he was gonna send to the Select Board. That's a week before you're telling me that he's come up with a plan. So I think the man... I, I, I'm not feeling warm and fuzzy at all. How's that? Okay, that's number one. Number two, you talk about right of way.
Twenty-five feet from the center line of the road.
Okay, so what about Artie Junior's house? He's got five vehicles in the right of way.
Seven.
Five. Oh, seven, sure. Sure. I, I started counting from the wrong place, because I put up posted signs yesterday, so. And I took pictures of them, so the first time one is gone, it's not gonna end well. Um, yeah, so that kind of conflicting information there that you went out today, and he told me that he went out last week and had a whole bunch of stuff for you guys. What happened to that? That's what I, he needs to answer to that, because that was what he told me.
Is that what went to Gary?
He had a huge envelope for Gary, but that was, um, it would have been a week ago last Friday. It would have been...
So Jeff hasn't presented you with any information?
I have, I have received zero of Jeff's files.
All right, so we'll follow up with that, Greg. Donna, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I, I guess I missed something here. What should have been done that wasn't done? What did Gary say?
So tickets had never been issued for any of the violations. So he wrote letters saying that upon such a date, you should start receiving fines and penalties. And those fines and penalties were never served upon...
Who was supposed to do the tickets?
Jeff.
Jeff does.
Okay, okay.
So we're gonna follow up and be consistent. Does anybody else have anything else on this? Is there anything we haven't heard before, Greg?
Uh, it's a question.
Okay.
It's a question. So are you, as a team, gonna keep in touch with Mr. Byazusi and have a report for us every week? Because I'm coming till it's done.
We won't have it every week. It might be every meeting.
Yeah, and it won't be as a, as a team. I mean, that's, so Anne, Anne will be the point person.
I think that...
She's the day-to-day town manager.
I think that this needs to be put at the top of the list for whomever is involved that has to do anything. Because this started three years ago and we're still at ground zero.
Okay.
I mean, it's absurd, absurd. And, yes, and I know there are other places in town. And now we're gonna deal with them, too. Hoorah!
See, past ground zero.
What's that?
Past ground zero now.
Yeah.
Uh, sure.
Yeah, it is.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, yeah, that'll be...
Can I ask or say one more thing?
Yes.
It'd be very unpleasant for me if someone in this room that's here right now were to go to Artie and tell him how much I am pushing on this. Chief Warfel.
Okay, thank you for that. We're gonna move on. All right, so we did, we took...
I don't say anything to her.
Listen, we're gonna...
I'm the one that started the conversation.
Chief, we're gonna move on, we're gonna move on from this.
We're waking this.
Okay, we took Tier 1B designation off, but we do have, um, our RPC mapping updates.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep, have a good night.
Absolutely. Do the same. Have many good nights.
So I had put in your packets emails back and forth between Logan and I about the mapping areas, um, and what may or may not qualify. Today, I got another one. I dropped off one of the maps that we had from our mapping exercise and I had highlighted exactly where all of our town water is, thanks to Sean mapping, you know, telling me where they all were. Um, so Logan sent me an email today. It says, "I just want to confirm that the town is requesting the areas depicted on the map to be designated as either planned growth area or village area, both of which are associated with a Tier 1B Act 250 exemption. Your email suggests this direction, but I want to be sure I'm understanding this request correctly." I emailed him back and said, yes, everything that is highlighted on the map I gave you, we really would like to have in either planned growth area or village area to be able to be associated with a Tier 1B Act 250 exemption.
Right, yeah, that was the whole point of it.
So I'm just letting you know, we're still working through the mapping stuff, but we've got to there. Um, in his emails, he did mention, um...
Oh, a second.
Oh, wait a minute here, I didn't see this.
The rural categories, the distinction between rural, general, rural agriculture, forestry and rural conservation is intended to reflect levels of regional support for various land uses based on current conditions and long-term planning goals. Rutland Regional Planning Commission has chosen not to use these categories to impose restrictions beyond what is already permitted under local zoning or Act 250. So those four lower classifications, they're not restricting or
Right.
whatever with their 2026 plan.
So on the nineteenth email, they commented on the Route 7 and 3 corridors?
Yes.
Planned growth area is based on criteria, blah, 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 for walking distance from a designated village center and being served by municipal water or sewer. Also outlines a state planning goal to avoid strip development along highways. Mapping for most of 7 and 3 is, as a planned growth area, will most, will not be approved. Yeah.
By the Land Use Review Board.
Conflicting with state criteria. It's commercially zoned.
So...
Doesn't have water and sewer.
It does, so when I highlighted it, that's where it comes into being a planned growth area due to the fact that it has water and sewer. So we're still working through that whole, how are we gonna deal with Route 7? Route 3 does not have a whole lot of water infrastructure. It's only in the first little section. section. So-
Yeah.
That's one of the areas that we're still trying to work through for the mapping.
Yeah, we're...
Okay, so, it's a...
It's an, it's gonna be an ongoing thing. It does take me a while to get Logan to respond to emails right now.
Sorry, I keep forgetting to turn that way, so... Yes!
So, yeah, going back to this rural categories thing, yeah, that's nice right now, they've chosen right now not to do anything, but the fact they've got stuff that is not conserved as being conserved, I have a serious problem with that.
And I'm-
Because they can change what they decide to do at any point in time, so it needs to be straightened out.
And I have, I have told them that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Plus, there's a meeting tomorrow night you're welcome to come to.
Is that Planning Commission tomorrow?
Yeah.
About, about this?
Logan will be here.
What was that?
About 1:00.
Logan will be here.
Okay.
So, yeah. They do have Tier 1A versus 1B on their agenda tomorrow night.
All right, cool, then, yeah, we should probably...
They start at 6:30 tomorrow night.
All right, cool. Thanks, Donna.
I can't make it anymore.
Um, I gotta write myself in out real quick. Ooh, wait.
If I can, for a second.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Any boards or anybody that has questions water and sewer-related, if they wanna know where our system is, I got a pretty good idea. They can always call me and ask me to come, and I can bring maps-
Perfect.
-or mark them out on the maps instead of them trying to assume-
I'll tell.
-so we can get accurate information out there.
That would be good.
Yeah, that's really good to know, thank you.
Did you say that was a 6:30 start tomorrow night, not 7?
Yes.
Is that something you could have by tomorrow night?
What's that?
The maps?
Honestly, I got a map in my pocket, because I can give Ann the access, and we can bring it up, and it could actually be on the screen.
And I have it highlighted in my office.
You do?
I do.
Consistent with, with what he asked?
Yes, because he, he took his map, and we had the big map, and we-
Did it.
-hash-marked it out.
Mine's not highlighted the way I highlighted regionals, but it has the same exact information,
and I can show you the hash marks for beginning and ending lines.
Okay, great, awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, okay, Planning Commission appointments for regular member and alternate member, so I believe, um, so we have, you have an alternate member that's moving up to a regular member, and you have somebody that would like to be an alternate?
Yes, Nancy Goodrow, who has a civil engineering background, who's quite qualified, she was a Lister before.
I'm just trying to spell her name, hold on. I knew there was a lot of vowels, okay, got it. Um, all right, does anybody have any, um, questions, concerns?
So who, who's moving up to regular position?
Gordon Foxes.
Gordon Foxes? She'll be going to alternate.
Yep.
Yep, Nancy has alternate.
Here's my line.
We do.
A motion for these two applications with Nancy Goodrow as alternate, and Gordon Fox going to-
Second.
Second position.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Great, thanks. Um, all right, um-
I'm accusing myself of the audience.
Yes, okay. Um, excuse me, abandonment of Channing Lane paperwork. So I, this is something that got started a while ago, but the paperwork was never filed or...
So, I had a request from Mark to look back to see if he, we could find the paperwork where Channing Lane was abandoned, or thrown up by the town.
Yep.
Took me a few days to find it in July 6, 2016, that's why I gave you the meeting minutes. It was voted to throw it up-
Yep.
-for lack of a better term, and it passed unanimously four to zero, and we were supposed to, or the, at that time, the board and town manager were supposed to do eight papers that you now have in front of you that we need to agree to and sign to formalize this, because it had never been formalized, as far as we can find in any records here at the town clerk's office-
Okay.
-or in the town manager's notes packets, et cetera, that I have located in the basement. We had found the paperwork where it was ever...
You did, so all you have, all the information was simply just what was in the minutes?
And a little bit of hand-scratched notes leading up to the minute-
Okay.
-uh, leading up to the meeting-
Yeah.
-but that was it.
And the town hasn't been maintaining the road-
No.
-this whole time, and since when? When was the hell on?
2016.
2016.
Okay.
Well, I'm done, though.
Oh, Chad's gonna-
No, I was just gonna say, we didn't even maintain it before that point.
No.
Okay.
We haven't maintained it 20 years.
Okay.
And I remember going out to that, that site for the-
Okay.
-meeting.
So what would this take, a motion to ratify this?
I know, do we have to, we have to ratify it, or just vote to pass it? I know.
It's already passed.
Well, no, I, I was gonna make a motion to approve this.
Yeah.
Ratify.
I'll second it.
Well, that's, I know, what is their specific language that we need?
You need to have it ratified, it's already been approved, it needs to be ratified-
Okay.
-and document signed to finalize the abandonment of Channing Lane to Mark and Andrea Winslow.
Okay, so we had-
Makes a motion.
A motion, and second, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, come back. Um, uh, see, before we go to orders and payroll, let's do tax rate discussion.
So we are very, very close to having the tax rate finalized, we are just waiting on Lisa Wright to finish up some information from grievances, because they happened last Thursday, she's in this Thursday, then we should be good to go with the tax rate.
Okay.
Helen is trying to figure out when to have you guys finalize the tax rate, if you wanna wait and do it at the July 16 regular meeting, or if you wanna meet next week to just do the approval of the tax rate. She's trying to bounce between who's on vacation and who's not being able to do the-
What's the timeline?
Wait till next meeting, or do what do you-
That she needs to know in order to get the bills out.
So technically, our bills just need to go out, because we don't, because we don't charge penalties and interest for the August 15 or September 15 deadlines, technically, we do not have to get our bills out until, like, September, October, because it's 30 or 45 days before your final, your due date where you charge penalties and interest. We don't do that this year until November 17. So if we wanna wait until the July 16 meeting to set the tax rate, that's fine. Helen's on vacation next week, the week, that the 16th, and the following week, Pat's on vacation, so we're just playing, who's gonna be on vacation and who's gonna handle what?
Don't the bills usually come out in August?
No, they, last year they got mailed July 25th, the week, or the year before that was around July 17th or 18th, it really depends.
We see you, hold on a second.
Last year it was due to the education rates taking so long because of all the revotes. This year, we had everything as of, I think, yesterday.
Okay.
But we're just waiting on Lisa finalizing the grievances, which she was planning on doing tomorrow.
Okay.
So we can vote on it tonight.
Dave?
Uh, so, I am around next week, so I could do that, and from my perspective, the sooner people get these bills, so they know how much they are, the easier it's gonna be for them to pay them, so they can plan ahead, so, um, I mean, if everybody else is willing, I have no problem coming in for a few minutes next week and doing it.
Sure.
That way, it's done, and we can get them out to people.
Yep, that sounds good.
No problem.
So I, do we wanna do Wednesday night, or do we wanna do a different night next week? Or daytime hours, or what works for everybody?
I'm available any time, doesn't matter.
Can't do it during the day on Wednesday, other than that, I got flexibility. Can be, can be that evening, but not during the day.
Do our regular-
Do the regular time?
Do our regular time?
At 6?
Meet at 6? 6:30.
It would be the, so, so, but then that means she's gotta stay here, well, and then, well, would you be able to get, okay, we'll make it right after, whenever you're done, like, right after you're done here, was, what's?
He, what time can you meet on Wednesday?
I, I gotta be here in the evening, I can't be during the day.
Right, so evening, like, anytime after, what time's the town office closed on?
4:30.
4:30.
I could get here for 4:30.
That way you're not having to wait-
Okay.
If that's fair, depends on Dave.
Two hours just to, for the one-
Check with Dave.
Yeah, Dave, does that work for you?
4:30?
4:30 on the 16th?
No, it would be on the 9th.
9th.
Oh, 9th.
4:30 on the 9th?
Yeah.
Okay, no, that should work for me.
Okay. Because that's our next meeting. Okay, so I'll tell Helen next Wednesday at 4:30, and then we can submit them next Thursday.
That's okay, would you-
That works. Call it.
That'll be the only thing on the agenda, correct?
It's the only thing on the agenda.
Okay.
So you don't have to be here?
Not available? No, I can do them.
Okay.
Okay.
Should be very long.
Yeah, okay. Um, all right, anything on orders or payroll?
Did we get an update on that bill for the greater?
No.
Oh, right, we're still waiting.
They get one in.
Do they usually, I mean, is that typical, though, that, do you, you use that same person? Have you used that same person?
That's the first time I've used it.
Okay. I just didn't know, normally it would be broken down more than what we saw.
No, I mean, it's kinda, obviously a rough handwritten and-
Well, yeah, I know, that caused some, a little, I don't know if I wanna say concern, but people just wanted to-
Yeah, no, it was just-
-get a more specific breakdown of the words per hour and-
Yeah, no, I can message them again tomorrow, and just, just get a hourly rate.
Yeah.
Like Ann said, we got the hourly rate, we can figure out how many hours.
True story.
Yeah.
No comment.
Okay.
All right, um, anything else on the orders? All right, we can start signing those.
Um, the ones in front of you tonight that you had at your places, they're two different tax years, that's why there's two different warrants.
Oh, okay.
That's one of them, and I put the other one in the back, because I didn't, um, I didn't have stickers on them. These, they can't sign until they approve.
Mr. Ford?
Yes. Sign those.
Thank you, chief.
That's the one you want.
Sorry, Henry, I'm fake, you out there.
Sorry, you can do that. Doop, doop. There you go, bud.
There's two.
Two? Really? That one I'm not gonna sign. Don't get that last one.
One. And then I picked up that. Those two. Some people need-
Liquor board.
I put, you get a big, I'm gonna beat it.
What did you do?
I saw that.
Thank you, babe.
Wow, I stuck my tongue out.
Oh, my goodness.
I got funny for you.
How bad did you do?
No, it's, seriously, you're gonna, I bet you didn't think of it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in trouble.
Got it?
That is water and sewer.
All right, we're gonna start signing that, um, if I could, unless there's-
We have to do liquor board.
Liquor board.
Dang, I forgot.
Liquor board.
All right, let's, recessed liquor board, open up his liquor board. So we have a special events permit for the Lavender Festival, Rutland Beer Works, and Vivarium Sellers LLC.
Apparently it's the same company, because it's under Rutland Beer Works, but I hadn't ever heard of Vivarium Sellers LLC, so I put-
Neither.
I put both names on there.
All right, um, and then we have Dollar General second class license, so this is-
Make a motion to approve both.
Second.
Are there questions on either of those? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All right, liquor board, and back into Select Board, and now, if there's nothing else, if I can have a motion to go into executive session in accordance with 1 VSA 313A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place a municipality or person involved at a substantial disadvantage to discuss the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain its reasons for the decision in open meeting. 1 VSA 313A, free to include the town manager and chief of police.
Okay. Lisa, I have a comment about Dollar General, since she brought it up.
Hold on, tell Mills, tell Mills to turn himself off.
Yeah, mute that.
Mute yourself! Stop shuffling papers.
So we moved into executive.
Well, I, we haven't yet, because I just read that I need a motion, but do you have a question about that?
Yeah, I do. Um, I think last year, we brought to your attention that they weren't keeping the landscaping up like they should be over at Dollar General.
Oh, okay.
And the same thing's happening this year.
Okay.
They don't mow, they're not weeding, they're not doing anything.
No, they're generally, we can't do special-
Yeah, no, um, but we'll take that as a late public comment, and we'll follow up with that. No, I've noticed that myself, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.[1770.83]